Ready, Kevin? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Kispemcys Town Council on October 5th, 2021. I am asking for an approval of the agenda, please. Councillor Shire, Deputy Mayor Shire, sorry.
So moved, your worship.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Shire, seconded by Councillor Luck. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. I have a comment this evening. I'm very happy to reveal that I just wanted to say congratulations to Kispemcys resident Darren Ritchie. In 1992, just three months after being diagnosed with skin cancer, Darren won the Canadian Men's Amateur Golf Championship at the Riverside Country Club in Rossay. This was a remarkable achievement, as Darren became the first Atlantic Canadian to win this prestigious championship. Darren faced some fierce competition in that tournament, including Mike Weir, who later became Canada's first and only Masters champion. As a tribute to his legacy, Darren was inducted into the New Brunswick Sports Hall of Fame in 2016. His plaque at the Fredericton Shrine needs some updating, however, because, a couple of weeks ago, 29 years after his first national triumph, Darren Ritchie did it again, capturing the Canadian Senior Men's Golf Championship in Quebec. Darren birdied his final hole to post a five-stroke victory over his nearest competitors. Now, Darren and I live on the same street, and while I may be mayor of Kispemcys, there is no doubt that Darren is the mayor of our neighborhood, always has been. So on behalf of council, the residents of Kispemcys, and all New Brunswickers, I want to offer sincere congratulations to Darren Ritchie on his outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations, Darren. And moving on to number four, treaty acknowledgement. Councillor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Kispemcys exists on the traditional territory the Wulas Tuwiig, Malacite, and Mekmak people, whose ancestors, along with the Pasmaquoddy tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Miller. I'm looking for a disclosure of interest. Seeing that there are none, we will move on to presentations. This evening, it's my pleasure to welcome Paulette Hicks from Envision St. John Strategic Plan Presentation this evening. Paulette is the Chief Executive Officer, and we welcome you this evening, Paulette, on this beautiful October evening. And we'd love to hear what you have to say with what's going on with Envision.
Wonderful. Thank you, your worship, and good evening, councillors. It's a pleasure to be back here. I see some familiar faces from before when I presented, but some new ones. So congratulations to everybody. It's really great to be back and presenting live tonight. So Erin's just passing out the strategic vision document, which you would have received, I think, prior to this, but this is a hard copy. And I'll wait for Erin to sit down, because she's running my presentation, actually. Thanks, Erin. So really excited to be here tonight to present our strategic vision for our region. It is hot off the press. We finalized it late last week. So I know tonight is a really special night, as we kick it off here for our partner with Kispemcys. So picture this: A generation from now, the region's population has soared. People are drawn to our community for great career opportunities and the desired quality of life. We are known as global leaders in key business sectors. Our Place brand is strong, and our residents are proud ambassadors. Ultimately, all of our children and grandchildren, if they so wish, can choose to live and work in New Brunswick. Our strategic vision is designed to help us achieve this. It is aspirational. To kick this off, you know, we really wanted to look at future back. Who do we want to be in 10 years? So we really focused on, as a team at Envision St. John, along with our board, you know, what do we want to achieve in 10 years? So we've got bold, ambitious targets. In 10 years, we'd like to see our population grow in our region by 25,000 people. We know tax base is critically important to municipalities. And with that said, we want to look at a goal of increasing municipal property tax by 30 to 35%. And also, Place brand. We want to recognize that a strong Place brand will help drive to reach these goals that we're setting. So our community is, we want our community to highly regarded, and that our people are proud ambassadors. Not only will you see results, but you'll feel them. We recognize that some of the metrics are tangible, but also some of them are intangible. We think the things that, in the community, that we want to measure is vitality. So busy restaurants, festivals fill our calendars, and there are cranes in our sky. So why the St. John region? A vibrant city at its core is critical. We recognize that in order for our region to grow, and for New Brunswick to grow, that we absolutely have to have a strong city core with our urban offering. And it is a center-out approach. We want, you know, personal balance from both urban experience and our natural wonders. We have a region that is steeped in history with strong pride of place, a place where anyone can establish real roots and grow, a shared vision for growth. We want to be a community right now that we recognize that we will see this growth happen, and already we have a strong foundation. We already over-index with our number of global headquarters in our city. We have a health and academia cluster with UMBSJ, New Brunswick Community College, and our hospital. We have so many assets that attract people and investment to our region. We know that if St. John succeeds, the region succeeds. And again, when the region succeeds, New Brunswick succeeds. So we feel this model is a real game changer. We are so pleased to be here tonight to presenting our inaugural strategic plan, which is a huge milestone. But also another milestone is celebrating standing up this agency. All six municipalities are aligned, working together for the greater good. We are being watched by many, including the premier and other regions, to emulate what we're doing here. How we do the work will be different. We are a new model for economic growth, and partnership is key. Put simply, we attract growth. We don't create it. Our role at Envision St. John will be to create the conditions for growth. Once we have the momentum, it will be clear, it'll create a virtuous cycle of growth, as more and more people want to get in on a good thing that we have here. Our value proposition. Envision St. John, the regional growth agency, is accelerating regional growth by connecting innovators, entrepreneurs, and builders to get stuff done now. Our guiding principles for the agency. In service. We recognize that we are in service to others. A whole system view. The agency recognizes that we have the whole system view, that we can take a look at where our opportunities are, and we can connect partners to get things done. We recognize that we will be an agile agency, one that will recognize opportunities, but at the same time, when things are not going well, that we can abort in order to focus on the things where we can really have a result. Gratitude. Appreciating all the good things in our region. And trust me, there are so many good things that are in our region that certainly build a foundation for growth. And authenticity. This is something that is so important, is that, from a sales perspective, that we are true, and that we are positioning our region really from the reality of who we are, and that is really from a strength-based approach. So with the agency, we have identified three strategic priorities. This will help us achieve the growth that we're looking for. The first one is growth readiness. So for us to attract 25,000 more people to live in our region, we need to tick all the boxes. That includes anticipating the needs to accommodate the growth. That includes what is our labor requirements in order to support our businesses, and the jobs that will be required. Housing, from a real estate perspective, what does that development look like, as well as healthcare. We absolutely want to make sure that if we can attract people to our region, that they stay here and they grow roots. Our talent acquisition and pipeline. We are developing a complex strategy to grow the working population, including immigration, bringing New Brunswickers back home, and a retention plan. We know that talent is critical for businesses, and so important for us to focus on strategies as it relates to the pipeline. Entrepreneurship and business growth. So we will be assisting startups, scale-ups, and accessing capital with respect to building business connections. Engaging our entrepreneurs and leaders to design a high-potential innovation play for our region. Our core services, excuse me, our core services for the agency. We are going to be an agency that will be built on data. We will be focused on metrics and measurements. We're an agency, from a marketing perspective, that will be articulating a clear and positive Place brand to attract people, visitor, business, and investment. And there's no doubt that we will be a sales agent. We will always have to answer the question, why St. John? Why this region? Another core service would be our investor relations. So that is examples like tonight, coming here, presenting our plan. But we will stay engaged with our investors, to inform them of the opportunities, the activities, and the developments of the agency. Communication and stakeholder relations. We know we play a lead role in sharing the knowledge and communicating what the opportunities are to build our economy and the health of our region. So just at a high-level overview from our framework, you can see from this diagram that Envision is in the center. We have identified our core services, our strategic priorities, and then how they link to our outcomes. There is very much a strong focus as it relates to what we're trying to achieve. How are we going to do this? We have adopted a new model, and it is called a platform methodology. We map an ecosystem with, we map an ecosystem and convey strategic platforms for areas of opportunity, set specific growth goals, projects, and timelines. We bring the right people to the table to identify clear objectives. The agency acts as a catalyst and convenor to accelerate the work. It is a collective impact model that is complex, and we address acute problems. So just to give you an example from a platform perspective, because I think that's really important, because this is a new way of doing business. So there's a couple of recent examples, you will recall, of recent, that we were awarded the Memorial Cup here in our region, which is very exciting. So just to give you a sense of how the agency played a role in that as it relates to the platform model, is we worked with the St. John Sea Dogs, who was the lead, one of our partners. We had a five-week period to pull that bid together, recognizing it was going to be a big lift for us to do that as it relates to going up against a really strong competitor in Quebec City. But bringing the right people to the table, looking at what we needed to do to win that bid, whether it was funding, whether it was our collaboration as a region, we were able to do that from a platform perspective. And I'm pleased to say, as you know, that we won that bid for St. John and the region. Another example of a platform is the modern, the port enhancement modernization project that's happening. There is a significant labor force committee that has been put together with respect to what those employment opportunities look like to support that growth. So we could have, over the next, you know, two, five, 10 years, 200 jobs, 500 jobs, 800 jobs. So we're working under this model, again, by bringing partners to the table to look at the opportunity, what are the training needs, how do we attract people to these jobs? So that could be working with partners like District Eight, the Learning Exchange, the Community College, University, and how we ramp up in order to accommodate this growth. So those are a couple of examples of platforms that the agency has already embarked on with our partners. The other platform is the campaign we did this summer, as we celebrated this new model, and we introduced St. John and the towns around the bay. So how do we link communities together that we're positioning ourselves to attract visitors and people to our region? And that is the end of my formal presentation. I always end presentations by saying, how can we help? This agency is here to serve our region, and to work with our municipal investors, and really to understand what the priorities are from our community. So I'm open to any questions, but certainly we are here to support Kispemcys and the growth of this region as well.
Thank you very much, Paulette. Certainly a pleasure hearing this, and it's so refreshing to hear how invigorated your team is at this juncture, after only eight months, 10 months on the job. So I'm certainly looking forward to seeing all the great things that are going to happen, especially over the next 10 years, when we have time to grow and time to align the workforce with the requirements that are going to be placed upon our region. And I kind of look at it that we are kind of the Great North, and that we've got gold here, and people want to come and discover this gold. So we've got the gold mine, we just need the people now to come and work on this. So I'm going to turn this over to Councillor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you very much for your presentation. It was extremely intriguing. As an entrepreneur myself, it's super exciting to know that Envision recognizes how important we are to the growth of this region. I was very pleased to see Envision's recent partnership with several local entrepreneurial agencies. And a strong regional growth agency is absolutely critical to the success of all our communities, Kispemcys included. I truly can't wait to see all the pieces fall into place. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councillor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to thank Ms. Hicks for coming today. It was nice to see you. I just wanted to, I guess, send my kudos to you and the board for such a great, you know, strategic presentation. Particularly, I love the long-term visionary approach. And a few things that struck me, which I'm really happy to see, and some of the things you talked about, is building on data and metrics and measurements. And those are music to my ears, because I think sometimes in the past, we have great ideas. But, you know, the fact that, you know, the board is really looking at, how can we put measurements in place to, you know, I guess, build in accountability and look at, you know, what does success look like? I'm really excited to see what, you know, the future holds. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Councillor Luck.
Thank you, Councillor Luck. Deputy Mayor Shire.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Paulette, for your presentation. It's exciting. I just have a few comments and a couple of things I wanted to pick up on what you said. And first of all, I'll start with, I like the program. I think it's wonderful. And I love that in the Bay, the video, I thought it was outstanding. If you haven't seen it, you need to click on it and see it, because it is really outstanding. Makes you want to dance a little bit. But, so a couple of things that come to my mind is, in the Greater St. John area, is preparing our workforce for opportunities. We know that through literacy, that our literacy rates are extremely low in the Greater St. John region. And Craig Alexander, I don't know if you're familiar with his report, talks about the economic spinoffs of literacy. And we're talking about a 10-year plan, so this certainly fits right in there. And I'd like to, I heard you say that you're already partnering with the Community College, with the Learning Exchange. And I just want to say, I can't emphasize how important that is, that we prepare our workforce, because if we don't have them here, then our people don't get to take advantage of the new opportunities and the talents brought from, out of our province. So I'd really like to see those really strengthened, on how we're going to go forward with that. And there's lots of, I know, wonderful nonprofit groups in this Greater St. John region that work diligently on that. But I think with you as a partner in this, which is brand-new for economic development, to see this partnership, I think that's really important. The last, the other comment I wanted to mention was about the opportunities for people to come to our area. Sometimes they don't, there's opportunities that are being missed, that we don't realize that people are looking for. People are looking for childcare opportunities for their children, and then they get here and say, well, there's no childcare space. People are looking for healthcare, obviously, and they go, I can't get a doctor. And I know that's not your responsibility, but I do, it all fits in, right? And when you say you're working on a different platform, that's what I hear. And I'm really glad, and correct me if I'm hearing that wrong, but, you know, I know UMB initiatives to have a new center, allied health center, things like that. So I'd really like to see us really, for once, really hone in on those areas that need a lot of work.
Great. So just if I could comment on both of those. So you're right, this document that you've had an opportunity to read with respect to our strategic vision, you will see in here, it is really about leaving no one behind. While we are the Economic Development Agency, social is a big part of that. It really is about the vibrancy of communities, the vitality of communities, and they link. You know, part of our growth strategy is how we work with our partners, and certainly we are targeting our youth. And they are a big part of the strategy as it relates to the talent that's needed. We can't bring all the talent in. It has to be homegrown. So when we look at future back, who we will be in two years, five years, 10 years, our children that are, you know, maybe in grade four or five, maybe eight now, there are careers that are going to happen in our region, and, you know, the port is one of them. Without doubt that many jobs are going to be attached, and there are great opportunities. So I think the social piece for us, all those partners are critical. We recognize that. And then we are, you know, from a foundational perspective, bringing them to the table. With respect to the growth readiness piece, you're absolutely right. We can attract them, but if we can't tick all the boxes, they're not staying. They need healthcare. They do need good schools. They do need daycare options. They do need good job opportunities. And businesses won't come if we don't have the talent. So as you can see, all of it is very much connected. So that whole system view that we're talking about, whether it's from a regional perspective, but also that all the agencies now are under one. So it allows us to have those, you know, opportunities to talk about it from across, you know, across the different pillars as we build out our strategy. So you're absolutely aligned. That is exactly how we're focused on this, and then tying that to the measurement of what we're trying to achieve. So, you know, very much we would say, you know, focus is the silver bullet here, and we are very focused on what we're trying to achieve. Yeah.
Thank you. And Councillor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you very much, Paulette, for your presentation. Exciting to have you back before Kispemcys Council. You're making quite a difference for our whole region. And I'd like to also thank you for your efforts in getting the Memorial Cup here. I'm sure everybody, many hands make light work, and when you get all the brains in one room, I think it is quite significant. But also, I'd also like to talk about a source of employers, employees, I should say, that have moved from New Brunswick. And we create some areas for them to come back to. These are proven commodities that are going to bring their talents back to home, you know? And I think that's going to be significant. That could be very significant. So when the time is right, and just keep them informed too, and...
The time is now. We have become very desirable. You know, there is a silver lining through this pandemic, and our region and all of Atlantic Canada is, without doubt, desirable. Our open spaces, you know, the nature that we have to offer, and there are great jobs. I mean, the one thing that we've been working on is, you can work anywhere now. So you can keep your job in Toronto, and you can come home and live in New Brunswick.
That's true.
We are seeing them, and they're already coming. So to your point, the, you know, we are welcoming our New Brunswickers back with open arms. But we need to tick all the boxes. They need to make sure that they've got what they need in order to be rooted here in New Brunswick.
And it would be nice to encourage more Indigenous population to come and be part of our team and feel welcome and participate.
Yeah, the inclusive, the inclusive desire in our region, there is a desire for that. There is a welcoming that is certainly we've seen throughout the region, but with our employer. So that is absolutely a big part of our strategy as well. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Somebody would like to move. Councillor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. I'd make a motion that council thank Ms. Hicks for presenting Envision St. John's strategic plan, and the presentation be received and filed.
It's been moved by Councillor Donovan, seconded by Councillor Luck. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Paulette, thank you very much for updating us on the strategic plan here, the strategic vision. And certainly, it's a culture change for our region. And as you can see, we're looking forward to what's going to happen. So thank you very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Wonderful. Thank you for having me tonight, and I can't wait to come back and give you more updates. Thank you.
All right. The next presentation was to be done by Claire LeBlanc of, she's president of the New Brunswick Breast and Women's Cancer Partnership, Inc. And she was unable to make it this evening. But I believe there is a motion there, is there? It's been moved to reports. Okay, so we will, so just in case anybody out there is wondering, we are supporting the month that is recognizing breast cancer throughout New Brunswick. So we have pink, as you can see, most of us are wearing pink, and we have pink balloons. So we're going to encourage people to join us on that, but we can talk about that later. I'm going to move forward with public hearings. Seeing that there are none, I'm going to ask for the acceptance of the September 21st regular meeting minutes. Councillor Donovan.
Thank you, your worship. I'd move that the minutes of the September 21st regular meeting be approved as prepared.
It's been moved by Councillor Donovan, seconded by Councillor Thompson. On the question.
I just have one quick question, your worship. Now that there's nobody here, can we remove our masks?
Yes, because there's no one here, we have no one, no guests here, and we do have plastic between each of the people seated. If you're comfortable, you may take off your mask. If not, you are free to leave it on. Thank you for asking. It was moved by Councillor Donovan, seconded by Councillor Thompson. On the question, seeing that there are none, please vote now. Seeing that there are none, please vote now. Okay. Motion carried, seven zero. Moving on to item number eight, unfinished business. Eight A. We have the Town of Quispem's review, revised five-year capital um, investment plan for the G T F administration, administrative agreement, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. And an amendment due to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one top-up funds. There's a motion there. Ms. Brandon, our town treasurer, will speak to this. Thank you, Ms. Brandon.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Um, so back in two thousand and nineteen, we had completed our five-year gas tax plan. Um, they've since renamed this um, fu- this fund, the Canada Community Building Fund instead of the gas tax. So previously the gas tax, now the C C B F. Um, and so back in two thousand and nineteen, our allocation for that five-year time period was um, seven million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. We took those funds and we allocated them out through the reports that were approved by council at that point in time. Um, now, in June of this year, June twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-one, um, we received a notification um, that our gas tax, we received additional top-up funding for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one time period. So we received an additional um, one point two million dollars. So the requirement to get this money is to update our plan. So what you see before you is the updated plan, which includes our twenty nineteen and twenty twenty actual spend from this uh, plan. With the addition of um, the twenty twenty-one cost increase, so our street capital um, budget was adjusted. So we've adjusted that in our plan. Um, our ongoing project of uh, the wastewater pumping station at Roberts Lane, um, which has come before council a few times. Um, as you're aware, through the whole tendering process, there was additional money required for this project. Um, so we have updated the cost uh, analysis for this and allocated some of these top-up monies, these additional monies, so that this project is funded and we don't have to kind of go into our reserves or um, tax for it. Um, the other new project is the water main construction at the Old Coach Road and Hovey Road. And in the twenty twenty-one's, street cap- twenty twenty-two, uh, sorry, I'm in a few different years right now. Um, in the twenty twenty-two street capital, um, included in this is the Hovey Road um, portion. So we um, thought that it would be prudent to get the water done at the same time as we're going to be doing some of the paving for this road. Um, and we're able to utilize all um, top-up money to fund this project. Um, and the other project that we've added to this report is our Hammond River Park revitalization. So um, this year, the old log cabin that was on, at the Hammond River Park was taken down. It was a safety hazard. It was beyond its useful life. Um, so that building has been um, removed. And it, through part of that process, our Director of Community Services um, engaged a community kind of consultation um, system to kind of say what our, our residents looking for. There was a conceptual design kind of planned as well. So we have added that project as it qualifies for the gas tax funding. So we have also been, we'll, we'll be able to complete this project completely using the top-up funds. So before you is the um, the SIP report that needs to be completed and authorized by council as well as our updated five-year um, community, Canada Community Building Fund, five-year plan.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, I'm looking at page four of twelve concerning roads uh, in, in the town, local roads and bridges. And I noticed that uh, the allocation for twenty twenty-two is one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which is the lowest of three years, twenty-one to twenty-three. And I was wondering, are we restricted to just that amount on roads, or can we expand our roads if we do that through the budget process?
Ms. Brandon.
Um, so yeah, through, through you, Your Worship, um, to Counselor Olson, um, that's just our estimated cost. That was our estimated cost at a point in time. Again, I was doing this at the same time as we were doing the twenty twenty-two budget. So the budget that you'll see coming before you for the twenty twenty-two is a little bit larger than, than that. But our funding from the gas tax funding would still be the same, but we can add costs.
Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Worship. Um, I think my question be through you to Mr. Loge. Is just that I'm trying to understand this um, plan, cause I wasn't part of it when it was created. Um, why wouldn't we, instead of allocating funds to something new, why wouldn't we just finish off some projects that have been in the works? And let them get further ahead and sort of, they're done, and then move on to other projects. Um, you know, I noticed that there's quite a few that we've been working on that could probably be completed if we allocated some of this money to those projects.
Yes, Worship, um, the, the schedule was approved uh, through council a few years ago. And, and essentially what we're looking for are projects that meet the, the terms and conditions, the qualifications for the gas tax. But also, what we did uh, when we considered the different projects was look at the different priorities. So for example, the one that, that we did is we did roads one year, we did a wastewater pumping station. We skipped a year, did a water main, then we went back to the, to another pumping station. So rather than doing, say, three pumping stations all in the same year, we felt that um, it was best to spread, spread the wealth around, so to speak, and, and we had multiple, multiple projects that, you know, different council members had, had placed different priorities on it. So what we wanted to do is respect that considerations of council, but also respect the fact that even if we wanted to do, for example, all of the lift stations in one year, we couldn't get that completed because of the capacity of either contractors or the system itself couldn't be done all at the same time. Because you, you have to finish one before you can pump into another one, for example. So it would in, in itself lead into some level of sequencing. So if we were gonna sequence them anyway, we felt that then that was the, be the appropriate time to then interest, interest, um, interject a different type of project, rather than say, okay, we're gonna do them all at the same time, or do them all, you know, on top of one another. We gave ourselves, gave ourselves an opportunity to get a project, get it completed, have a, have a, of a year that, um, using this as an example, the current Roberts Lane Lift Station was on the books two years ago to be started. And it's really only going to tender now, going, it's under construction now. So we had a year that nothing would have been done. So we wanted to take advantage of the funds availability that met the criteria of the gas tax, but also met the sequencing cap- our capacity to actually do the work.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to follow up on that, the reason for my question is I, I'm, you know, we were on our climate um, change committee uh, uh, last week, and we're, we're, we've um, noted that as a priority of council, the climate change. And we, um, we see that we wanna stop waste from going into the Canobicasus River. And that was my concern is how quickly can we get this project done? And, and you've answered my question. I totally understand what you're saying about sequencing, and we can't do all the work at once. But I just, that's why, that was the reason for my question. I just wanted to make that clear. Um, because, you know, I, I worry about uh, what's happening to our rivers and lakes. And I wanna make sure that anything that the gas tax money, that priority is there for us.
And if I may, Your Worship, I, I would want to clarify one point. All our lift stations and infrastructure is, is quite secure. There is no situation where wastewater is leaking into the river systems. Um, we've, we had a portion of funds that were included, that we upgraded all the waterfront pump stations to have uh, waste separation and retention so that, to protect that, to get us that, that ability to then look at. Uh, when, when you speak of climate change, now the new lift stations will be upgraded to, to be more efficient and effective and, and, and take gas, uh, greenhouse gases emissions into, into uh, to account when we do the upgrades. So, so I just, you know, I respect the fact that, yes, uh, uh, the staff as well have that desire to make sure that all of our infrastructure is as, as best operating as it can be, and it is now. We're just thinking, taking advantage of this, the gas tax ones in a sequence approach.
Thank you so much for that assurance.
Ms. Brandon.
Sure, yes. I also just wanted to include that we also um, can't utilize any of these funds without pre-approval of the projects kind of going through the plan. So that was another reason of why we kind of had to go through and couldn't use it for, you know, maybe something that was ongoing or already started. It had to kind of go through the process and fit within the, the grant criteria. So that, that was another part of it.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, Worship. My question um, is through you to um, either um, the treasurer or the um, town engineer. Um, it's really a process question in terms of top-up funds, so probably the treasurer. It's always nice when government comes and gives us more money. So um, this is a two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three plan. And we're in the process of um, looking at our master transportation plan and potentially a strap plan in the near future. So I'm sure there'll be lots of new ideas and, and things that we want to do, and I'm just wondering, um, again, regarding process, how often or how, you know, is this something that, you know, we don't expect? Or is this something that is typical, that every year we get maybe a little bit more added to it because we're growing? I'm not really sure how the government decides. I'm just curious for future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Uh, Ms. Brandon.
Um, so I wouldn't say that we could count on it. Um, again, I think when the top-up was announced in kind of twenty eighteen, potentially could have been an election piece um, as well, and it is also just gonna depend on the funds that they have. So the top-up so far has been available twice, but not in every year. So it's not really something we can count on. We have to kind of wait for that announcement and then be quick to react when we, when they do, does come up.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Counselor Luck. No, no, thank you, Your Worship. Sorry. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I don't know why my light's on. It won't go out.
Counselor Thompson.
Uh, yes, Your Worship. I would move that the document entitled Town of Quispem's five-year capital investment plan for the G T F administrative agreement, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, be adopted as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Counselor Bigger. We seem to be having some technology problems this evening. Anyone else? Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Number ten, correspondence, Counselor Mike Bigger. Request to Province for Rapid Flash Beacon at Crosswalk and Speed Reduction at the Hampton Road, Route one hundred at near or at the Bob Monroe Drive, Canobicasus Valley High School. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Worship. Um, perhaps what I'll do is I'll make the motion now, and then in due process, we can have discussion about this. But uh, so I'll move that, uh, I would move that council authorize sending the attached draft letter to the Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure, requesting a rapid flash beacon at Hampton Road near its intersection with Canobicasus Baptist Church and K V High School. And to implement a reduced school zone speed limit in this area, similar to the other three schools on this road, which of course are Quispem Elementary School, Hillary, Harry Miller Middle School, and Rossay High School.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question. So if there's any discussion on that or any questions. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the, the letter uh, is attached here, of course, as the motion indicates. And the email that was submitted into the agenda package that outlines the situation for everybody to review. Um, it's uh, in one sense, it's a very straightforward situation, I know, but uh, just as a tiny bit of background to summarize it. Uh, both, uh, Her Worship, uh, the mayor and myself received an email from a resident, uh, Laura Gracewood, um, back on the twenty-second of September, just regarding how the school, K V High School, has urged as a measure of their COVID uh, uh, sort of safety protocols. They've urged parents to make use of the Baptist Church parking lot across the road and just up towards, you know, sort of heading west on Hampton Road a slight bit. Use that as a pickup and drop-off zone um, for students, uh, so as to help avoid the congestion that goes on down in uh, the, the Robert Monroe and the driveway, and just, you know, as a means of wanting to not have, I guess not have kids all walk to school together, whatever. Anyway, they um, uh, so that means that daily at these sort of two, sort of traffic choke points of the day, there are dozens of kids crossing at that crosswalk now, uh, both going to school and coming back. And of course, that adds to the already sort of congested nature of K V High School, where it's pretty notorious. We're all pretty familiar with that. And um, so her concern was that uh, kids being the way they are, uh, often, you know, cool marches on. I was this way. Uh, not all kids are necessarily paying attention to the rules of the road when they cross. But the crosswalk itself that's there is the same as any little pedestrian crosswalk we would find on any lazy or quiet street in our community. Uh, cause it was never designed for what's going on with that crosswalk currently. And so her concern that was relayed to us is, of course, uh, this is probably just an accident waiting to happen, especially when it's being used daily like that. And so I went up myself, I parked, I watched what was going on, and tried not to look like too much of a creep doing that. But um, I saw about thirty cars probably in that parking lot at picking up kids. And uh, it was, uh, you know, it was daunting to see the kids ge- ge- getting across the road. Then subsequent to that, as, as the email says, I reached out to the principal of the school. She indicated that, yes, that's why they're doing this. It's a daily occurrence now. But also, of course, she reminded me of the craft dinner program over at the church, and hundreds of kids on Wednesdays going over to that. And that it's a muster station if they ever have to evacuate the school over at that parking lot. So the symbiotic nature uh, relationship between the school and that church and that parking lot is very clear. And it's a bit unique compared to even the other three schools that we mentioned here in this motion. In that kids are not mandated perhaps, but well, in a sense they are, to be crossing there. And so it just seems to me that with winter coming, icy conditions are coming, snowbanks are coming, low-hanging sun is, is on the way. It's going to get uh, more and more sort of, uh, you know, uh, risky. And so it seems to me, as plain as the nose on my face, that we should be considering making a change like we've made at other spots along the road there, at a very busy road. And so that's where this comes from, and uh, uh, I think that both a rapid flash beacon crosswalk would be a much uh, sort of sturdier version of a crosswalk to have. And I think that commensurate with what has happened in other school zones, I think that reducing the speed along there would uh, be optimal for the safety of our kids. And I mean, I think we all, I, I, I'm sure, everybody, every, you know, most people would agree. We certainly wanna take the safety of the young people, and drivers frankly, uh, into consideration. And so I have spoken with the Director of Engineering. Of course, the traffic calming budget is expired for this year. Uh but we uh feel that we should appeal on the basis of the urgency of this to the province. Of course, we have to get their approval to make changes, and so that's what I propose to do, uh to ask them to consider um installing on our behalf and for the sake of the kids uh this uh equipment, so. Uh I, I don't think that a case can be made, frankly, if we all agree that it's uh it's the, in the best interest of safety of young people that are crossing there daily. Um if we think it's in the best interest of those kids to change this, I don't think we can make a case to wait until the summer of next year to make changes there, frankly. So I don't see how anyone could logically make that case, uh to be honest, but thank you. That's basically my contribution on that.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Uh Counselor Donovan?
Thank you, your worship. Um I just wanted to say that I uh wholeheartedly agree with um Counselor Bigger. Um I have a brother who is currently at KVHS and uh every day when I go to pick him up, it's an extremely hectic um solid half an hour of my life trying to make sure that I don't uh run anybody over. Um so I, I, again, I would agree with that, and I think it's probably in our best interest and the uh the uh best interest of the school to request that on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, your worship. Um I, I guess through your worship to our Director of Engineering, call kind of a multi-question. So um so a couple things. In the past or in any of these other zones that are, that are on the provincial road, which is the Hampton, Hampton Road is provincial. There's, so it's gonna be multiple question. Does the province pay or have they ever uh facilitated in some of these uh beacons or, or sidewalks? And secondly, for, for those that aren't around, uh that weren't around long ago, you had given an explanation why it did not drop to a thirty zone like it does in, in front of the um Hampton High School, or sorry, the Rossay High School, Quispem Elementary, just because of the way the uh Robert Monroe Lane goes out. So I guess maybe explain why it's currently that way and what is the process to go through for the pro- can, the province has to authorize speed limit changes, I believe, on the road. So it's just not a, a, a town decision, so all those requests have to go through. And do they have, have to also authorize the beacons um as well? So many questions there, sorry, Gary.
Thank you, Counselor Miller, and we'll go to the Director of Engineering, Mr. Loje.
Uh your worship, that's correct. The, with regards to the speed limit in the area, um the rationale that was given to the town previously was that because this particular school didn't actually front on the road, which was why it was left out of the considerations for a reduced speed zone. Uh now that having been said, um Counselor Bigger's uh motion and his correspondence is the, is the appropriate way to request the changes to be made. Um and ultimately, the DTI would do then their own uh warrant analysis. Um we have been fortunate in the past that we've had um uh the, the bu- the budget available to proactively look at, for example, the rapid flash beacon at the Quispem's uh um elementary school, and that was installed by the town and paid for by the town, so it was not a, a, a initiative of the province. However, we did have to get permission to do that, and if you'll recall, prior to this past summer, the, the speed limit was a change that was introduced by the town ourselves a few years ago, and the province just recently lowered it again. Um so, so that initiative to lower the speed limit was through the province. We had made an initial request to keep it uh at forty, but they dropped it to thirty just recently. So, so the process that's being used now is the, is the appropriate process. I have no past um examples of them funding these particular uh installations, unfortunately, but that doesn't stop us from asking, and they may have this equipment in inventory. Um as I communicated to Counselor Bigger initially when he was investigating this particular project, um we just don't have the budget to carry an inventory of these units. If we get them, they have a specific location planned um for the town, and if you will all probably recognize it's integrated with our active transportation system, connected to a lot of the trails that the Community Services Department is creating. And so those have been identified as priorities. So when we get a budget, it comes in and it goes in the ground, so we don't have anything to, to put in place. So other, other than taking something away from some other location, we just don't have it. And as far as uh ordering them on an urgent basis, um what we've all seen and, and I hate to be using the pandemic as an excuse, but deliveries of these types of systems are six, eight, ten, twelve weeks with no guarantee, and we're into winter weather and the time for installation maybe be past us. So as Counselor Bigger mentioned, council could very much approve it in our twenty-two budget, and it would be installed next June, but it doesn't do the people crossing the street this month any good.
Thank you very much, Director Loje. Counselor Luck?
Thank you, your worship. Um I kind of have a two-part question. One is, um I'm wondering if there's any type of temporary crossing mechanism that could be installed or used, again, just to kind of preempt the uh, the risk that was identified until something more permanent could be um installed. And based on the letter, it sounds like we are asking the province to cover the cost of this. So if they come back and say, it's a great idea, you have permission to do it, but you have to fund it, how much is, what does, what do these rapid flash beacons run? Thank you.
The two parts, the second part, first, uh they range about seventy-nine, eight thousand dollars for a set. By the time you've got them installed, it's, you're approaching eighty-five hundred dollars. Um the last two units that we purchased, we actually partnered of all places with the region of, uh regional community of Halifax, Greater Halifax Regional Municipality. They had a standing order that we actually piggybacked on to get them at that price. Um I'm not sure if that current contract existed. It was a special deal for the Atlantic provinces, so there was a bulk purchase in place. Um and w- as, as far as permissions and um uh temporary measures, the only temporary measure that we've seen used that's effective and it is, is, it was at the Quispem, the elementary school, was actual crossing guards. And I doubt you're gonna get high school kids to pay attention to crossing guard.
Thank you, Mr. Loje. The question's been called, it was moved by Counselor uh Bigger and seconded by Counselor Donovan. No further comments. Please vote now. Motion carried? Motion carried, seven zero. Under correspondence ten B, Nora Emerson, Acting Library Director, Canobicasas Libraries, proposed twenty twenty-two budget. And there is a motion resolution. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I would uh move that council refer the proposed twenty twenty-two Canobicasas Public Library budget to the twenty twenty-two budget deliberation process.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion. Is motion carried? Motion carried unanimously. Number eleven, bylaws. Seeing there are none, we'll move to number twelve, new business. Recommendation of award, RFP for consulting services for development of strategic plan. Staff report from Acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor Olson?
I would move the council award the strategic plan, RFP number two zero two one TQ zero seven dash twenty-six to MDB Insight for the price of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars excluding HSD.
Motion's been moved by Counselor Olson. Seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Moving down to item thirteen, reports. I don't know if anyone wanted to speak to uh Pink, um Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. Um I actually have a question through you, your worship, to uh Director of Engineering. Just a question on the Town of Quispem's building permits. Uh I don't see the um, the large building, the, the hundred unit on Kippersel Land still there. Has that been sent in for, cause it's not in last year's and it's not in this year's. Uh thank you. He, sorry, the, the large one on the Hampton Road.
Elmwood.
Yeah.
Um it's my understanding that the municipal planning officer is meeting with the developer. They had initially made a request to delay the project, as council is aware, amend their, their schedule and their nature of their project due to construction issues, so they shifted it to a concrete ICF fa- fa- uh farm uh project. Um they have until, I believe, the I don't know, think it's the end of this month or the end of next month to actually submit finalized plans for approval. Um so that they, their schedule is, is staged in that they have uh to, this year to actually apply for a permit, whether they actually start or not. But the, but we need to receive a finalized set of plans that they can actually make a permit application for. Uh and I believe their municipal planning officers met with them on various occasions to try to get them back on schedule. Um as we know, ultimately, schedules are um agreed to upon by the developer, and if they can't meet it, then they have to come back to council to amend their agreement again. So we're just reminding them of their schedule. Hopefully, they'll comply. If not, then the recommendation will be for them to come back before council with whatever amended schedule they think is appropriate and explain to you why they can or cannot proceed in the timeframe. But at this stage, our municipal planning officer is meeting with them to try to get them on their schedule, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loje. Counselor Olson?
Thank you, your worship. Uh I'll make the motion and then we can have a discussion. Uh I'd move in response to the Brunswick Breast and Women's Cancer Partnership Inc.'s request. The Town of Quispem says show its support of the color NB Pink initiative by creating a pink pumpkin patch display at town hall or other town property with this event being led by Mayor O'Hara and interested members of council in coordination with the Community Services Program Director. And further, council encourages the local businesses and residents to recognize and bring awareness of breast cancer awareness during the month of October by flying pink balloons, flags, or banners on their properties.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier?
It's not on the question, um no questions, just a comment, your worship, that it's um, I'm I know it's um very near and dear to many of us um on this council and um how important it is that we show our support. And uh so with our pink tonight, and I know we wear pink in our hearts all the time, so uh I'm pleased to be able to second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item C. I don't know if uh Counselor Olson?
Yes, your worship, I would uh move that reports be received and filed.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger, that the reports be received and filed. On the question, please vote now. Counselor Miller? Counselor Miller? Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Business arising from committee of the whole. There was nothing this evening. Looking for adjournment. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Hope you find joy in the rest of your evening and joy in each day to come. Thanks very much. Have a nice evening, everyone.